Call a meeting out of the Monongahia County Commission order. It's December the 17th, 2014, at 10:01 a.m. I ask that you please stand for a moment of solemn meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning we have eight generations, $1,488.92 for tax years 2014-13-14. Orders as of December 17th, a statement of services for Lynn Crane. General County Fund expenditures, $376,776.32. General County Purchasing Card, $24,091.66. Coal Severance Fund, $48,107.45. Kent Muffley, $289.90. Kent Muffley Purchasing Card, $14.19. Chestnut Ridge Park, $921.13. Mason Dixon Park, $46.33. Assessors Valuation Fund, $2,059. 911 Cash, $525.02, for a total of $452,831. And I have budget revisions to approve for County Commission. This is moving funds within the budget for the shooting range. This is payment of the invoices for the GIS contract, which we had over a three-year period, so this needs to be paid. Payment of medical expenses that were approved by the Commission last week for the Sheriff's Office and the Prosecutor's Offices, asking them to check for $4,436.10 be included in her travel line item.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion for approval on the second, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Renita. Oh gee, I need another pen, don't I?
I told you to get your arm longer. Is that liver?
Huh?
Is that liver?
Yes.
All right. First is the HUD grant for MAYSP for the month of November, $1,003,031. JEBG grant also for November, $2,001,1941. Day Report Center also for November, $17,313.6. Levoca grant also for November, $3,055.92. Governor's Highway Safety Program DUI grant, month of November, $4,0692.54. Safe Communities, Governor's Highway Safety, Safe Communities, November, $275.55. We also have three sheets of no activity that we have to send in for Governor's Highway Safety. Distracted driving.
I need to show it.
Account number 154, I don't remember what that one's for.
There's no activity.
No, there's no activity. And the crash data systems, no activity. We also have the ESG for November of 2014. We have a total of $16,325.88. Last is a closeout for last year's ESG grant for $1,200 for the Bartlett House, and that's for the month of June, 2014. And that's going to close out their grant.
Move for approval of all the reimbursements. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Okay, we've got two grant applications, both for the Community Participation Grant Program. One is for the Children's Discovery Museum of West Virginia, and the other is for Onitzville Community Association for $10,000. So we have both applications and there's a resolution. Whereas the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program funding was set aside by the West Virginia Legislature for the County of Monongahia to undertake for Onitzville Community Association an amount of $10,000, and for the Children's Discovery Museum of West Virginia an amount of $5,000. And whereas the County of Monongahia has applied for funding through the West Virginia Development Office, and whereas the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program requires that a local government unit enter a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Development Office to receive and administer grant funds, now therefore be it resolved by the Commission of the County of Monongahia, West Virginia, that the President is hereby authorized to execute said agreement and any other necessary documents on behalf of the Commission, and that he be empowered to sign a contract and any agreement necessary to obtain these funds.
Move to accept the grant proposal to resolution. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Thank you.
Representatives of Cooper's Rock Foundation.
Hello. Let me give you guys some handouts. This is updated version of the resolution. You've seen this before, but this is the same map that we gave you last time. Mr. Bartolo, I think you weren't here last time, so let me, we'll give you a quick overview of what we talked about. This was probably a couple months ago now that we were in.
You haven't read the resolution before, have you? Have you read the resolution into the record?
This would be, uh...
No, he didn't have the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to read that.
This is the one that you sent to me, to be correct.
Oh, okay. All right.
Your version, the official copy to be signed.
Okay. Great.
No, I think it's the same.
Yeah, I think it's the same. Let me, let my friend here look over it while I'm talking, so he can tell me if it's different.
I want to pass the resolution.
So, well, just to give you an overview, since you weren't present last time, the West Virginia Division of Forestry proposed a timbering project over Cooper's Rock earlier this year. We were concerned by the size and scope of the project, as well as the lack of recreation opportunities that were included. If you look at the map that I showed you there, it kind of gives you an approximate idea of what the project, or the size of the project and where it is. It's near the, it's between the Scott Run Trail and Piscatah Road over in Cooper's Rock. It covers in total about 375 acres, which is the largest timbering project ever on the south side of Cooper's Rock since the state acquired the land in 1936. And like I said, one of our primary concerns was that there was no noticeable recreation plan included in their prescription. The only concession they made for recreation was, if you see the dash lines on the map there, those are all timber haul roads. Their gift to recreation was that after the project ended that we could use those timber haul roads. We don't think that that's an appropriate or good place for recreation, and on 375 acres of development, I don't think that it would be unreasonable to ask for some dedicated recreation trails. So the resolution that you're looking at, I'd like to say is not an anti-timbering resolution, but we are trying to ask for some appropriate changes for sustainable timbering, and timbering that places a strong value on the recreation and tourism that so many people in the area enjoy at Cooper's Rock, and balances that with harvesting of forest products. And so, in addition to the lack of recreation opportunities, the general size of the project, we felt was a problem, and we'd also like to see less clear-cut style timbering being done. Or, you know, there are some benefits to certain, to regeneration of certain tree species from clear-cut logging, but we think that those could be achieved in smaller patches of clear cuts, such as, you know, 20-acre or less clear-cut patches, rather than some of the very large clear cuts that they seem to prefer in the area. So the whereas statements in the resolution, give you all the background, and those are not significantly different from what we presented to you previously. But I believe, I think it was you, Mr. Bloom, who suggested that we add a few statements to give the resolution more teeth.
Let me just interrupt you here a minute. I mean, you just suggested there's been some changes to it. I think today we're considering passing this resolution, and I think we need to read it into the record as it is today.
Sure, sure.
And also, I was a little remiss, I need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't say that. Dave Hopkinson, 313 Morgan Lane, and I'm a Mon County resident.
Okay.
So...
Would you read the resolution forth, please?
Sure. You want me to start at the beginning, read the whole thing?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, sure. Resolution, support of recreation, tourism, and local economic sustainability regarding the forks of Scott Run Piscatah Project at Cooper's Rock State Forest. Whereas Monongahia County residents enjoy activities such as hiking, hunting, trail running, mountain biking, cross-country skiing, picnicking, sightseeing, wildlife viewing, and other outdoor activities at Cooper's Rock State Forest. And whereas the West Virginia Department of Commerce's 2008 statewide comprehensive recreation plan survey found that among West Virginia's walking, hiking, or jogging was a consistent top choice for daily or frequent recreation by all age groups, as well as the top preferred activity by younger residents. And whereas a key to Monongahia's county future growth is a viable economic and vibrant society, which depends in part on its ability to attract and retain young, educated, professional people, and opportunities for outdoor recreation and local tourism help attract and retain young, educated professionals at very low expense. And whereas, submission statement in the Division of Forestry's guidelines for managing West Virginia's seven state forests include multiple uses of the forest, including developed and undeveloped outdoor recreation and aesthetic preservation, among others. And whereas, the Division of Forestry's recently re-proposed Forks of Scott Run Piscatah Project includes no substantial recreation plan, with the exception of unmaintained logging skid roads that may be accessed by the public at the conclusion of the project. And whereas, public input regarding this project through written comment letters reflects the large logging operations that create the appearance of clear-cut harm the values of Cooper's Rock State Forests that attract tourists and recreational users. And whereas, the West Virginia Division of Forestry's guidelines further specifies that up to 25% of the revenue generated from the sale of forest products on state forests returns the state forest system for the enhancement of the overall forest environment, including recreation, wildlife resources, conservation, education, forest fire prevention, and watershed protection. And whereas, the FSRP project includes no plan for reinvestment on Cooper's Rock State Forest of up to 25% of the revenue generated from the timber sale. And whereas, several of the facilities at Cooper's Rock State Forest are in severe decline and would benefit from the reinvestment of timber sale revenues, including the only restroom that is available for free to the public and which is closed to the public during the winter months. And whereas, clear-cut logging and other ecologically adverse forestry practices displace local jobs by using machine-intensive logging and by discouraging investment in highly skilled labor and in the local economy. And whereas, out-of-state companies and labor have been observed on prior logging operations within Cooper's Rock State Forest. And whereas, the proposed FSRP project encompasses approximately 375 acres of forest land and would be the largest timber harvest in Cooper's Rock State Forest on the south side by 68, since this land was acquired by the state in 1936. And whereas, only 8% of the state-owned forest in West Virginia has been designated to become old growth and/or mature forests, the majority of which is contained in narrow-protected riparian areas such as buffers, such that large tracks are lacking. And whereas, the Monongahia County community would benefit greatly from dedicated official recreation trails within the FSRP project, from the reinvestment of revenue generated by the project into upgrading facilities, such as the addition of a new restroom, from additional growth forest land, and from preference given to local labor and local specialists. Now therefore be it resolved on the 17th day of December 2014, that the Monongahia County Commission asks the West Virginia Division of Forestry to revise its Forks of Scott Run Piscatah Project and all future timber harvesting prescriptions in order to, A, include a plan for the reinvestment of 25% of revenue generated from the timber prescription into the facilities at Cooper's Rock State Forest, and B, develop a credible plan that adequately supports recreation, tourism, and local economic sustainability by working with recreational experts, local residents, the Cooper's Rock State Forest Recreational Advisory Committee, local organizations such as the Cooper's Rock Foundation and local governments, and C, give preference to local labor, local specialists, local operational support, local retention of profits, and local economic reinvestment, and D, provide for safe and effective weed and pest control that does not use broadcasting of chemical herbicides and pesticides on forest lands, and E, reduce the areas of 90% plus harvesting, i.e. even-age rent regenerations or clear cuts, to 20 acres or less, and having a longer regular shape to the area. Reduce areas of two-age stand treatments, also called two-tiered cuts, to 40 acres or less, and maintain within these areas on each acre at least 12 high-quality trees of the dominant crown position, and evenly distributed spatially across each acre. And on all other acres of active harvesting, only single-tree selection and group selection. Leave on each acre no fewer than 50 well-distributed trees that measure at least 11 inches diameter or breast height, and leave on each of these acres no less than 65 square feet of basal area for hardwood-dominated areas, 8 square feet of basal area for cove hardwood-dominated areas, and 100 square feet of basal area for softwood conifers-dominated areas. And F, around boulder fields and rock outcrops, and on each side of perennial waterways and intermittent waterways, establish and maintain no top buffers for horizontal distance from the boulder field, rock outcrop, or stream channel, margin equal to at least 150 feet. And G, separate individual clear cuts larger than 2.5 acres from each other by no less than 250 feet wide buffers of mature or old forest. We respectfully request that the Forks of Scott Run Piscatah Project now proceed until these items have been addressed. The last thing I wanted to say is that we welcome your input. If you do need to see additional changes to the resolution, we can do that, because this is, you're putting your name on this. We want you to feel comfortable with this, and I'm happy to answer questions about this. And my colleague, Mark McCoy, who's also with the Cooper's Rock Foundation, is also here to answer your questions.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
Comments, I guess. I, I'm generally, I'm generally in favor of the sense of the bowls. I guess this is a question. You've got a rather specific request here. And I guess we could, we could debate whether 25% is fair, or, I'm going each one we've under a.
Sure, sure.
25% is fair, or whether we should be asking 35%. I guess we, I, it's simple, yes, I think that you do work with local organizations, because we're the ones that's ultimately, it's in our neighborhood, and I'm all for local labor, locals, specialists. I'm also very much in favor of safe and effective use. But when we get on down here and talk about the specifics of 90% plus harvesting, regeneration, 40 acres less, 12 high-quality trees, 100 square feet of basal area for softwood, 150 feet channel margin at least, 2.5 acres from each other by, my question is, are these numbers based on experts in the field and their scientific study?
Yes.
Is this a policy that you all sort of adopt, or is there some, or do you bring this down from some other national organization that says these are the way you protect? I'm just trying to figure out where all these numbers came from.
Yeah, let me, first, let me back up to part A where you asked about the 25%. The 25% of revenue is written into their, into state code, and that's, we didn't choose that arbitrarily.
Okay.
So state code dictates that the Division of Forestry can reinvest up to 25%, meaning zero to 25%, back into the forest from which they take the forest products. We're concerned that they had no plan that they presented with this prescription on how they might reinvest some of that money back into the forest. And I think we've discussed before with the declining facilities at Cooper's Rock State Forest, that's something that we could certainly benefit from. The next part, I'm going to pass that question off to Mark. I think he can answer that better than I can.
Hi, I'm Mark McCoy, that's spelled M-A-R-K-M-C-K-O-Y. I'm resident of Preston County now, but I have lived in Mon County for many years. So I helped in drafting the changes into the resolution.
Do you want to give your mailing address, please?
My mailing address is 1217 Laurel Run Road, Brewston Mills, West Virginia. And my property is adjoining the WBU University Forest. But in helping to draft the changes, what we tried to do was put in some specifications that we thought were defendable. So I did look in documents from the West Virginia Division of Forestry to get numbers that we had presented, along with the U.S. Forest Service, and I looked at the Virginia Division of Forestry's documentation also. Plus I looked at some other places, but most of the numbers came from those places. Now, some of the numbers, such as the basal area measurements, we had to basically just choose some numbers that seemed to fit in with everything that the West Virginia Division of Forestry had in their management plan for the Cooper's Rock State Forest and in their guidelines. So we believe the numbers there are adequate in terms of allowing enough logging to be done to be economical, there shouldn't be a problem from that standpoint, and retention of enough trees to preserve the aesthetic values and other forest values that we would like to see preserved. The 20-acre limitation, the West Virginia Division of Forestry did not specify anything directly on that, but in their 2006 management plan for the Cooper's Rock State Forest, they had recommended clear cuts for areas of 10 to 20 acres in order to create habitat for rock grouse and for other wildlife. So there are bases for all of the numbers that we chose. And so if you'd like more, I can...
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify. I wanted to make sure, because we're dealing with certain specifics here, and it sounds like what you're saying, these numbers and requests are scientifically based, may fit in with areas of expertise that you drew from to come up with these. I just don't want to pass a resolution that DNR or someone says, "That's outrageous."
Well, these are guidelines that are largely taken from their own, the West Virginia Division of Forestry's own management plans.
That's what I want to...
And so we're simply asking them to follow their own guidelines and plans.
Well, I feel secure now with that answer.
There are some differences. For example, if you look in the West Virginia guidance, what they say is, for example, on the buffer areas around streams, that there should be a 100-foot wide buffer. But if you look at what the U.S. Forest Service says, they say that the buffer should be 1.5 times the height of the tallest trees, or approximately 150 feet. So just to make it simple, we just said 150 feet, to give it a clear-cut number. But we felt there should be some numbers that were defendable, and that we can point to some authoritative sources for those numbers. We realize West Virginia Division of Forestry will maybe want to quibble with some of these, because these are not the numbers they used. But, you know, they're not following even their own guidance in many instances.
You're seeking best performance on their part.
Yes.
I'm all for best performance.
I'll move for approval of the resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
And thank you for coming back. You did review this, and you did the request that we had made, and thank you for your work on this. Hopefully we can get this resolved.
I did review the official copy as it was being read.
Okay.
It's the same.
We have here an executive session.
That's at the end. We can do that at the end.
Move back to the end.
I just listed it down here.
Okay.
I appreciate your hard work on this. I know it's, it takes a lot of work.
Thank you.
A few weeks ago, the Commission approved the Land Use Master Plan, and that was sent down to the Division of Energy, and has, this is a notice that we, it's been accepted by the state.
We need any action on that?
No. Just letting you know. Next is a form of requisition for payment from Series 2014AXI Tax Bond Project. This is requisition number three. It's listed as two on your agenda. In amount of $3,034,572.88 from bond.
Move to approve the requisition.
Second. Have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Unfinished business. Receipt of transport agreement from WBU, Public Safety.
I just want to keep you updated on the return of the process transport center agreements that we're sending out to municipalities. This has been returned by West Virginia University, so they are participating.
So we got Westover, Granville, Star City, and WBU now.
I haven't gotten Morgantown back yet. Star City, I think so.
We approved it, but I don't think they sent it.
Hasn't been back yet.
Okay. Any more unfinished business? No. New business. Year-end report for calendar year 2014.
Well, this is a look back from January to present of everything that you, the highlights of the year. Several pages, do you want to read, or do you want just to discuss?
Activities. Yes.
Do you want it read?
You feel like reading seven pages?
No.
Maybe you should just highlight it.
Yeah, if you could just highlight it. And then I think the commissioners should be given a chance to add to your highlights if there's something they think is noteworthy.
January, Richard Bartolo was elected president. We had adoption of a proclamation for National Stocking Awareness Month. We accepted recommendations of Silling Associates to hire a Nacera Corporation for the renovations at the Justice Center. Worked with the Chamber of Commerce to participate in the first Mon County Day of the Legislature held on January 9. Approved bonds, authorizing revenue bonds for $45 million for the University Town Center, and the second bond not to exceed $20 million. In February, Commission met as a board of review and equalization. Hosted a community leadership forum to meet with local officials regarding numerous issues. Commission continued to work with MUB and the Health Department to find resolution to the flooding problems in Oakview subdivision. The credit rating for Moody's as a AA2 and AA3 for the revenue bonds to finance the Justice Center, the maximum 20-year term. In March, Commission became involved in the Wellness and Health Program promoted through WBU, got the elected officials and department supervisors to review requests for funds in order to prepare the annual budget. Notice to proceed was issued to begin work on the Justice Center. Commission announced the essay contest in conjunction with the National County Government Month for 8th Grade... Month for eighth grade students in the county. Subject was, what does my county commission do for me? Commission approved the general county fund budget for thirty-two million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars and a coal severance budget in the amount of one million, four hundred three thousand. In April, Commission hosted another community leadership meeting, uh, joining the city, county, Board of Education, WBU representatives. Adopted a resolution in observance of National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Adopted proclamation in observance of Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. And adopted proclamation for Telecommunicators Week. In May, the Commission sponsored the essay contest previously announced for eighth grade students. There were thirty-seven entries received and judged, and during our meeting on May seventh, the winners were announced and cash prizes were awarded for the first, second, and third place winners. Uh, students, the teachers of those students also received gifts. During that day, uh, three students shadowed the commissioners during our regular meetings. We adopted a proclamation in recognition of letter carrier screw drive day. Participated in Morgantown Market, held at Morgantown Mall by setting up a table for information. Adopted a resolution in recognition of Caregivers Week. Adopted a proclamation recognizing community education outreach services. Opened bits for paving of the county road into the Canine Adoption Center, Motor Pool, and Navy Garage. Recognized the one hundred year anniversary of community educational outreach services. Hired Jessica Smith as the superintendent of Mason Dixon Park. In June, we hosted another community leadership forum. We participated in the first public viewing of the newly obtained local command post for the nine-one-one center. The Commission signed a contract earlier in the year to turn the Hartman Run Bridge over to the DOH. DOH has awarded the contract for the replacement, which was to begin immediately. July, received and accepted a petition by the City of Morgantown to annex the Oakview subdivision. Entered into an agreement setting policy for the operation of ambulance service within Mon County through EMS. Proved a request for four fire hydrants near the Irons Creek Road. In August, we hosted a community leadership forum. Set the date for a public hearing on tow policy. Hired Lori Guseda to serve as superintendent of Camp Buckley. Discussed availability of regional vision insurance for employees. Discussed a unique idea of placing vinyl mapping on entrances of certain buildings in the county. In September, Commission held a public hearing to make improvements to the existing tow policy. Only minor changes were necessary. Adopted a proclamation recognizing Suicide Prevention Week. Representatives of WBU Sports Marketing six-four-six class attended the meeting to announce the rules for entering the contest and name the first police vault team coming to Mon County. Adopted a proclamation for Patriot Day and Constitution Week. We recognized Martin Bosson, who's a young man from the Netherlands who has been attending to the grave site of a former Osage resident, PSC James Woodline. Held a public hearing on surplus vehicles, on auction, I'm sorry, vehicles. We made a little, a little over seven thousand dollars for that. In October, um, we received detailed report from Anthony Jamperoni regarding the plans for future events at the county parks. Scheduled dates for hearing property appeals carried from the February sessions of the Board of Review. Adopted a proclamation in recognition of Employee Disability Awareness Month. The towns of Star City was the first municipality to host the community leadership forum in October. Mayor Sharp chaired the meeting and provided refreshments. Special line item was approved in order to pass through funds, uh, that the Commission was accepting for the, uh, in cooperation with Army Corps of Engineers agreement. Adopted a resolution in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Special celebration was held with WBU and representatives of the Penn York, New York Penn Professional Baseball Club, with the name of the West Virginia Black Bears was announced. Commission, uh, considered loaning Paw Paw Public Service, which is ten thousand dollars for the installation of water line. Ribbon cutting ceremony to unveil the new shower house at Chestnut Ridge Park was held, completing board assessment appeals. We began considering move to tablets for more efficient office operation. November, as of November one, the new dental envision plan went into effect for employees. Commission held two public hearings to address requests for amendments to the zoning maps. One was regarding a new area in Chestnut Ridge Road and the other amendment to Maple Drive. Commission adopted proclamation in recognition of pancreatic cancer awareness month. Commission assisted Clinton Water Association with a request from Little Creek PSD to revise the boundaries. Commission staff attended basic training for veteran commissioners, incoming commissioners, and staff at Bridgeport. In December, Commission revised previously adopted rules and procedures to make minor changes in, uh, in the order for the agenda. Agreement was adopted that will send, will be sent to each municipality and WBU, uh, established a thirty-five dollar charge per trip for the transportation of, uh, any arrestees to the regional jail. Announced it was made that the contract and other documents related to the new interchange at I-79 were signed. Bi-monthly meeting at the community leadership forum was hosted this month by the Board of Education at the Green School on Mile Ground. Throughout the year, the Commission has been working with AMRA, the Army Corps of Engineers, to solicit funds to be passed through the Commission for the operation of the locks. Commission adopted a service animal only policy for county-owned buildings. During the entire year, the Commission has continued the process of posting all board and authority positions that are open, accepting applications during the background checks and interviews. Commission is participating in the planning of the Mon County Day, the Legislature scheduled for January two thousand and fifteen. Through the year, the Commission has been able to save thousands of dollars on construction by doing major projects with in-house staff. We processed millions of dollars in payment requests as our two major, uh, projects continue, that being the Justice Center and the Ball Field. And in addition to that, Mr. Ellis with West TV sent me some statistics. There were forty-nine videos uploaded to YouTube on the internet as of December tenth, including two intergovernmental committee meetings and one public hearing. There were three thousand ninety-seven views of the meetings, county commission on YouTube. City of Morgantown broadcast the unique videos approximately one hundred and ninety-six times on Channel fifteen. So, we've gotten some good coverage from West TV for sharing. It's been a busy one.
Busy year.
That was a short version.
That was a short version.
Very, very good. Resolution.
Any new comments? No additions?
Well, I, I would make a, uh, a, uh, a lot of times people, people forget that the Hartman Run Bridge, uh, sat there from nineteen ninety-two when they announced that needed to be replaced until two thousand and twelve. It was this Commission that resolved that, that issue when they were building the new bridge, you know? So, twenty years of waiting and two years of work that we agreed to do.
I'm gonna save my comments till.
Till later?
Yeah, the, the, uh, reports from the commissioners.
Okay, uh, this is a good segue. We, we, we work very hard as a commission to be very progressive and focused on the needs of people. In the needs of people, we need to remember our history, and we need to thank those people that, that work diligently and have always been very adamant, uh, about recognizing those who, who spent their lives in public service and worked for, worked for other people. Uh, last year, the House of Delegates passed a House concurrent resolution number sixty-two, which was the naming of the South High Street Bridge, John W. Powell's Bridge. Now, John Powell, he devoted over fifty years of his life. He worked as a House of Delegates. He was a teacher in school systems. He worked as assessor. Uh, he, he started the Celebration American Committee that created, uh, Observation on July fourth every year. He served on numerous boards and commissions. Uh, he's, uh, worked and obtained funding for the Veterans Plaza out here in the corner, in the one corner of Courthouse Square. He's, uh, spearheaded the renaming of the South University Avenue to Don Knotts Boulevard. He's worked on, on recognizing, uh, raising funds for Don Knotts Boulevard. Uh, the Morgantown City Council last year towards, uh, towards the beginning of that session last year, adopted a resolution requesting that the legislature named South High Street Bridge to the John W. Powell's Bridge. Uh, I am, I know at least, uh, three of the, uh, sponsors, delegate Fleschauer, delegate Sprich, and Pazdin, were sponsors of this legislation last year. It's my understanding they intend to reintroduce that legislation again this year. And I felt that it was only proper that the county commission takes a position on this early, so I would recommend that we adopt a resolution in support of the legislature's, uh, uh, appoint, uh, naming the South High Street Bridge, the John W. Powell's Bridge.
Oh, I'll second.
You want to second it?
No, I was gonna let you second it.
Uh, I don't have any problem seconding. I have a comment. One of the things, and I guess my, uh, I guess you call it a pet peeve, is that, uh, we name so many things after someone that brings our tax dollars to the community and spends it for us. Uh, and, and yet sometimes we don't recognize people that, that share days of their lives and their sweat and, and, uh, day-to-day accountability. And, and, and I think in the tradition of Montague County, not that we should stop recognizing those people who make a significant contribution to the community, but I think we need to keep it in perspective. And when you have someone that, that spends fifty or sixty years of public service in this county, that's certainly deserving of some recognition. Whether you agree with their political philosophy or not, it still required some effort and some, some, uh, attention to duty, so to speak. And, uh, I have no problems in making sure that, uh, we have a motion and a second and making it unanimous that, uh, we send the recommendation that that bridge be named after John Powell. So, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously. Uh, you want to bring up? Wait, wait, wait till we get to you. Uh, reports from elected officials. Let me look out here and, uh... Mayor, anything? West side of the river. Kelly, anything from the sheriff's tax department?
Not today, thank you.
Ron?
Yes, sir, I do have something.
Town of Grandview.
Um, I received a five thousand dollar grant for the, uh, Public Command Center, so I'll be sending you a check earmarked. It'll be in your name, it's earmarked for MECA.
Oh, good.
So, I can do everything I do.
Very good. Jane? Anything?
No.
Commissioner-elect, anything?
Just been attending the training session last Wednesday, that's why I wasn't here, and, uh, really, I have meetings scheduled with the remainder of the elected officials. I'm going to have to follow them if they're taking off.
Okay. Department supervisors, Gambi?
No, sir, not this time.
Renetta? Diane? Bobby? Uh, I don't want to miss anybody. Okay, reports from county commissioners. You want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. I've got, I've got a couple brief things. Uh, I, I was down for part of the training and board meetings the day before on that. It was pretty well attended with the West Virginia Association of Counties. The, our assessor and, uh, his assistant was also present. So, Montague County was well represented at that, at that, uh, training session in Bridgeport. I, I am, uh, the local elected official of the Workforce Investment President. I missed that meeting last year, and so they elected me president for one of those apps. So, uh, we had, we had our annual meeting, and, uh, I'm proud to report that our workforce investment, our region, our region, uh, Region Six workforce investment is doing extremely well. All our numbers on training, uh, and helping displaced workers, team training and all is extremely, uh, running extremely well in, in this region. Uh, again, Montague County is a low unemployment rate of three point four percent. One of the things I talked, uh, that I've been talking about, uh, for the last few weeks, has recently received more publicity, and, and that's, that's the need, uh, that's the need for more housing. With all this building going on in Montague County, you'd think, oh, wow, there's a housing shortage, and it's gonna be, continue to be a housing shortage. You gotta realize that in the last fourteen years, we've increased our population by over twenty-seven percent. And at that rate of growth, in the next seven to fourteen years, uh, we are going to, uh, be approaching the hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand. Just if the rate of growth doesn't slow, if the rate of growth picks up with more people, which it often does, it couldn't go much faster. So, those are all the issues we have to deal with, the infrastructure. Also, a separate item, I received a, this is sort of a sad, uh, item. I received a letter from, uh, Ms. Jo, Jolie Carpenter, who was the grandmother of the seventeen-month-old that was tragically killed, uh, out on, at the home on Butters Ridge Road. She had, uh, she, the grandmother had, had talked to, uh, had written to Secretary Maddox of the Department of Transportation and, uh, about renaming one of the roads, because when he was, when he was injured, the parents grabbed him and, when they called, called, they said they needed to get to the Goschen Road exit. So, the little seventeen-month-old was, uh, was at the pilot station, and some people tried, were trying to get CPR, but they didn't know really how to do it, because no emergency people were, were there at the time. And sadly, he passed away. They requested that one of the roads be named, uh, after Creed Davis, that's the seventeen-month-old. Uh, the road that they are suggesting is Broom Sage Road, to be named Creed Davis Road. And if it's, uh, acceptable to the other commissioner, oh, Secretary Maddox, uh, referred this to Cindy Kramer, the traffic engineer, who, who wrote a letter and pointed out that county roads naming or renaming is up to the county commission. Uh, and I'm not sure what the total process is, whether they're gonna have to have public care in the roads or whatever, but, uh, I would, if it's, uh, all right with the other commissioners, I would like to refer this request to Diane, and she can contact Mike Wolf, because I think it's MECA who handles this. Uh, and we do what is necessary to begin the process to, uh, name, uh, Broom Sage Road or another appropriate road that, for some reason, should not be changed for Creed Davis to remember, uh, the seventeen-month-old that tried to lost his life.
Anything else?
No. Any objection to, yeah, Diane?
It's, it's not really an objection in how I'm doing it. I guess my question is, I just want to make sure that we set up some sort of a procedure and process, because my concern is, there's a lot of tragedies. We have one with, you know, uh, the individual who took several lives the other month, this past month. So, I just want to make sure that we follow procedure and the process, and, you know, let's look into it rather, you know, I, I go forward, but let's also see it so we have some sort of.
Well, you put it in works section.
That's what I like to do.
Try to adopt some procedure.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing, and then we could go along with that at the same time, if that's okay with you.
That's, that's, that's fine with me. I, I just felt that it was an appropriate request.
Yeah. I, I support that it should be checked in further and, uh, and then the results brought back to the front of the commission for a vote. Anything else, sir?
That's all right. Thank you.
I just have a quick update, uh, since it was mentioned. Martin Bosson, as you know, was trying to have the bridge naming in Osage, and Charlene Marshall and I had worked on the bill that was gonna go before the legislature. I talked with Charlene Marshall, and now we've talked to Joe Statler, and he will be submitting, uh, the name, the renaming of that bridge in Osage, and Joe is gonna take the lead on that. So, we're gonna move forward on that, and Charlene's giving the material, and I'm giving the material to Joe Statler, and I want to thank him for that.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, I got a couple things. Uh, I think as everyone knows, this is, uh, my last meeting. Uh, one of the things I think I'd like to do is to, uh, certainly thank those who have supported me. I think sometimes when you lose an election, people lose sight of the fact of how many people did support you. And when you have over eight thousand people support you in this county, that's noteworthy and, uh, certainly deserves a, uh, an expression of appreciation. And in the same token, when someone receives ten thousand votes and, and wins the election, it's worthy of a congratulations. And in the same token, when someone receives ten thousand votes and, and wins the election, it's worthy of a congratulations. And, uh, I certainly sincerely extend that to you, Ed. The commission staff, uh, I can't say enough about. Uh, this county is very fortunate to have the, I never thought I'd get emotional on this. Um, feel excused. But we are very fortunate in this county to have the kind of people that we have. Uh, I would shudder to think the shape this county will be in when people like Bobby Doyle and I, and leave. Uh, they're not replaceable. And, and I think that the people in this county need to appreciate that. I can't keep going on about this. It's just that I thank you for, for the opportunity to serve you for this good six years. Comments from the public?
I have a couple of comments.
State your name and address, please.
My name is William Garvin. I'm director of EMS for the Star City Volunteer Fire Department. I'd first like to apologize to the commission for the misinterpretation of the letter that you received from our lawyer concerning the mutual aid response agreement between Mon, uh, Mon EMS and the Star City Fire Department. It had nothing to do with the original agreement. We did not withdraw from that agreement whatsoever. This was an agreement presented to us by Mon EMS, which we have many objections to. And we notified the commission of those that we plan not to, to sign the mutual aid agreement until that, those problems are taken care of. I don't know whether you've seen copies of the agreement or not, but I have copies for you if you'd like to.
Mutual aid agreement?
Mutual aid agreement.
Yeah, well, John sent that to, and, and the problem, as you already recognized, the problem with is the very second paragraph in that letter was you've reached an agreement with Mon EMS. And then the next paragraph was, we have problems with the terms of this agreement. I wasn't sure what agreement he was referring to, but it looked like he was objecting to, objecting to the whole situation.
I thought you'd be a copy to with the copy of the mutual aid agreement.
Well, he did, but, but that is, but the very second sentence said is, it is my, uh, it is my understanding of Montague County Commission that designated Mon EMS prime nine-one-one emergency medical services, blah, blah, blah. My client does not agree to the terms contained in said proposed agreement. Well,
Understand.
what are you referring to? Are you referring to the immediate, uh, paragraph? Or normally you go, if you, if you refer to said proposed agreement, refers to the closest modifier, uh, which would be the Mon County Agreement with Mon EMS, rather than jumping way back to the first sentence. So I was like, this doesn't make any sense. So it was the letter that created the confusion.
Yes, okay. And, and we do, uh, agree to the first agreement. We, we, as you know, we reluctantly, reluctantly agreed to that and we've received negative response from our community for giving up the nine-one-one, but that is what you wanted, so therefore we agreed to it for the county. We do.
Look, let me just interrupt you. One of the things that I was under the impression of was that before any agreement came back to us, all the parties involved were to be in agreement. Uh, and that was, that responsibility was placed upon, uh, Mon EMS.
That's correct.
And, and for somehow, I don't know how we got the impression everybody was in an agreement.
They were all present.
We, we, we agreed to the original agreement. And part of the original agreement requires that there be a mutual aid agreement between
Yeah, we call that.
between the parties. We, we disagreed.
So then this is the mutual aid, okay, okay.
So you're still trying to hash that second part out?
Yes, yes.
Okay, rather than rejecting everything.
That is.
And I apologize because that's how we both interpreted. We did not realize it was clarifying, but I'll let you go on and then we'll talk, okay?
We, we were totally abide by the original agreement.
Okay.
We will provide the services to the c- community, to the people of Mon County as you, as you requested in the, in the rotation list. But we do disagree with the requirements that Mon EMS put upon us in the mutual aid agreement.
I don't have a problem with that at all. That, that, that's, that, I would support you on that matter of fact.
So that's where we stand.
The only concern that I have and I appreciate, I wish, and again, I, I think what we're working on is with your group and, and the commissioners, a better communication so that rather than we have an attorney send us, it would have been, it would have been helpful from now on if you could contact us so we're alert of what's going on, but then we wouldn't have had this confusion. However, with that being said, I, I have to report that was sent to me today from last night, a comment that was made. And, uh, my question is, um, and here's the quote, "If Tom Bloom doesn't quit slinging mud, he is not going to like it when I start pointing out some of this county's flaws when it comes to emergency services." And that's by a Mr. Chris Osekic. My question is, the concern is, I don't care about getting berated. My concern is, if there are flaws and you are aware of it, don't you have a responsibility to tell the three of us? And so what I'm asking for is, you don't have to do it now, but if you could send a letter with those flaws.
Or come into work sessions.
Yeah, and, and that's more than, and that's what I wanted to, so basically the, the good part is when you leave here, this is over with. We need to move forward and that was my concern. And in no way was there muddling. My concern, and as he said, was we thought that the nine-month agreement was gone. So if you could bring us those, and, and we could set up in January, a session. So, and if you could send it to us early, I think that'd be really important because we want to make sure, and as you do, where you are in charge of the Star City in that area, we are in charge of the whole county. We want to make sure that we have partnerships at work. And that's what we're trying to do. So and from what I've been told, I guess your concern is with number two.
Number two.
That is now, is that a new statement that has been added? That's, that's my question to you.
That came from Mon County, Mon Emergency Medical Services and their, uh,
New agreement?
New agreement with us.
Okay, and, and I'll read it just so it's public.
That's one of the words.
Okay. No compete. The mutually respondent agrees not to compete against Mon EMS for any commercial or non-emergency transfer contracts that are valid and in effect with Mon EMS at the same, at the time of the making or duration of this agreement. Now, my question is just simply, this is now between Gen Care, you all, and Mon EMS.
That is correct.
Are we involved, the county commissioner, or you were just alerting us to the concerns?
We're alerting you to the concerns. We're involved and the county commission is involved because they asked for mutual aid agreements.
Okay.
And Non-EMS has given us a deadline and we're standing to defend the process.
Okay.
To have.
I, I, I'm just, Ed, the, the.
I'd be happy to sign a non-compete agreement for tremendous re- re-numeration. As a businessman, somebody offered me a non-compete agreement, I'd sign it for.
Well, I, 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 I support your, your efforts to negotiate a proper, uh, agreement that you find acceptable. I mean, that was, that was the way we left it, you know, and we support that.
I have one question to ask if you're, under recitals, on the first, on the second paragraph was Mon EMS is the designated exclusive provider under authority by agreement with the Mon County Commission for emergency ambulance and related emergency medical services. In reading the agreement, they are the primary exclusive first to emergency ambulance service provider, but not the own, not the exclusive emergency.
So the exclusive.
I, I like our, our language better.
Not to the county.
It, it's different, right? Well, I'm not, I'm not, I, I, I think the language ought to be consistent. What we adopt is what we found acceptable. I, I'm not gonna sit here and try to negotiate it for you. I don't want to get in the middle of it. Uh, but, on, on the negotiating, I'm, I'm saying, I support your negotiations. I believe if there's terms that are referring to the original agreement that we've, we've approved, that those terms should be consistent. So I'm in agreement with you there on that.
Thank you.
One final question. What happens if you don't sign it? Just for our information.
We'll continue to provide the service for MECA colleagues who did that.
But we just don't have a mutual agreement at that time. Okay. That's fine. I'm glad we cleared this up. I appreciate that because I think there was a lot of confusion. Now it's resolved. Well, first, part A is resolved. Part B is for you all to resolve. Okay. Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you. Anyone else, public?
Yeah, I would like.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Mayor Johnson, west there. I understand you're getting emotional. We all get emotional too. And, and I really appreciate everything that you've done, you guys have done as a group. And, uh, you should be proud of, I'm really proud, but be satisfied with, with the results that you guys have had in the last six years and, uh, hopefully this will continue. Ed, you've got a big pair of shoes to fill there, brother. Good luck to you and thanks for everything, Bill.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mark has come in. I don't know if he has.
Mark, you have anything?
Uh, just, you know, I wanna just bounce off of what the mayor said and your stuff. I've appreciated coming on here, being wow, this is going on my second year and, uh, getting some guidance from you all and especially you, Commissioner Park, for your, uh, your direction, which you've kinda given me over the course of the last fifteen years. Quite appreciate it and my respect for you. And our, our respect for the commission as a whole, what we've done together. And I know, Bill, you were a big part to help them spirit it. You'll be missed, uh, solely and, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. I, uh, do want you to know that, uh, this will be a reduction in my income. And, and if you do happen to see me with the cup and the pencil, uh, please be generous. I'll, I'll, I'll be generous. Okay, thank you. Anyone else, member of the public?
I'd like to, uh, wish you well. Um, it was a long haul. Uh, we ate a lot of bean dinners together. A lot of them. Uh, we talked a lot. Uh, you talked about how some different things you'd like to do with the county. Uh, some of those things you got to do. Um, I appreciate all, uh, your, uh, knowledge and suggestions that you've, uh, given me over the years with, uh, court security. I appreciate you as well as the other, the other two of working with us, um, to see that, uh, we all work and come and visit a safe environment. Um, but I just, uh, appreciate everything you've done for this county. It goes without saying, um, the other eight thousand did as well. But I look forward to working with Mr. Hawkins as well. But, uh, I just wanted to say thanks, Bill, for everything you've done for this county as well as, uh, our security department. Appreciate it.
You know, one, yes, Kelly.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize this was your last meeting and, uh, I just want to echo absolutely everything. Bill and I go way back, uh, both, uh, professionally and, uh, family friends. And, uh, it's been great working with you. Um, I'm sure you've not seen the last of you. You'll, you'll be around. And, uh, I also want to echo what everyone else has said as far as the working relationship within the courthouse and, uh, look forward to, uh, working with the new commission and, uh, wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm, and I'm sorry the sheriff is not here today. I don't think he realized it was, would be your last meeting.
Last meeting, yeah. Thank you.
I'm sure he feels the same.
Well, you know, there is one other thing, you know, uh, Ed and I are one and one. Uh, I won the last one, he won this one. Uh, but I can assure you, there's not gonna be a rubber match. We, uh, there, there won't be a third, uh, contest. Uh, but, but the one thing that I do, uh, hope to see is, and that is, I hope to see Ed work into this, uh, commission and become a vital part of it. I think he can bring some new ideas. Uh, he can certainly bring some new direction. And I think that, uh, Ed, I think you're gonna have the ability to take what, what was once a problem with, uh, discussion with Camp Muffly and join this commission in a new direction and offer your valuable historical perspective on not only Camp Muffy, but, but the other camps as well. Because I think you can serve a public interest that is unique. I couldn't serve it, but you can. And, and that's what I would hope to see is, hope to see you contribute to this commission, the assets that you bring to it. And other than that, uh, we have a scheduled executive.
Move to go in executive session pursuant to six dash nine-eight dash four, section nine.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, we're moving into executive session and ask, please that everyone leave the room.
I move to come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
I, I would, I'd just like to point out that Montague County Commission has always been, has been totally dedicated to, uh, recycling, the recycling programs. People need to understand, which has gotten kinda confused in this situation, that the solid waste authority is an independent, statutorily created entity, that our total participation is appointing two commissioners. It's a government-run program for recycling. We are going to, uh, we, because of our commitment to the cycling, recycling program, we're gonna continue our efforts as we just explained to, uh, the, the director, and exploring our, our options, how to make sure that recycling continues. But, uh, it needs to be understood that we have no authority as a commission to run the solid waste authority because it's created by statute. Move to adjourn.
Oh, no.
Oh. Oh, you got something else?
Yeah, now that I've composed myself with you for six years.
Oh, you're welcome.
For letting us grow and George helps.
You're quite welcome. I was a beneficiary. Now, we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting adjourned.